City of Lawrence Common Council Mid-Month Meeting is now called to order. We all stand for the Pledge and Legions of Prayer.
Pledge and Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're so grateful to be together here as a council tonight. And we ask that you'll bless us that will be able to push the city forward and make good decisions. And we ask that you'll bless our mayor and our administration and our policemen and firemen, that you'll be with them and bless them with safety. We ask that you'll bless the citizens here tonight, that you'll bless them with protection and bless them as we depart, that we'll all leave in safety. And these things we say in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
We have a quorum. Comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. At this time, council attorney would like to address the council.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to make everyone aware, I had received in the last week a couple of calls from council members asking me about Boz McKinney and Evans' relationship with the Perfection Group, who was selected as our, by the council, to move forward with a guaranteed energy savings agreement for negotiation. I want to make it clear, we do not represent the Perfection Group, we represent the City of Lawrence. Apparently, and this does happen sometimes in large law firms where the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing, apparently, the Perfection Group had approached another partner at my firm about representing them on another matter in another city. And that was taken up the chain by me to our firm management. And the decision was made that we would not be representing them in any matter, anywhere, just to avoid any appearance of impropriety. So I wanted just to make that clear, we do not have a relationship with them, we have not taken any money from them, and nor do we intend to. So since that issue was raised, I wanted to clarify it for everyone.
I believe Counselor Jones has a presentation that he would like to do for Troop 196 out of Lawrence Township.
It's always great to be on the council and see citizens show up, and it's also extremely special to see young people come to our meetings and see what's going on. Tonight, we have a special Troop 196 out of Lawrence Township. It's three young men here, and they're working on a citizenship merit badge. So they are going to come forward to speak just for a second, because that's part of their duty. But first of all, I'd like to recognize their scoutmaster, Mr. Haney, if he'd come up first.
My name is Gabe Haney, Troop 196, and I'll call forward Seth Wollston.
I'm Seth Wollston. I'm 11 years old, and I am now a first-class scout.
Kevin Haney.
I am Kevin Haney. I am 11 years old, and I am also a first-class scout.
Jackson Lear.
My name is Jackson Lear. I'm 11 years old, and I recently earned the rank of tenderfoot.
For those of you that don't know, as a Boy Scout, you've got to earn 21 merit badges, and 11 are required, and tonight is one of the required ones. And as a fellow Eagle Scout, it's great to see you young men come, and we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Any other council members?
I have a couple of, Madam President. If the administration could explain the crossing closure agreement and where the $10,000 for this project will be going and what fund. And then I also had a couple of things that were brought to my attention. I would just email this to David Lottz. It's potholes and Kenniston Farms, that's all.
Any other council member?
A couple of us have got some emails and texts about the Snafu bar, since it is possibly going to be the future site of the police station. And it's been brought to my attention that there is some profanity and vulgarity on that building, and parents are driving by there and kids are seeing it. And I don't know what we can do as a city, but if we could figure out a way to get that off of the building, that would be great. Thank you.
I did have a question. I did reach out to the city a couple of weeks ago in an email about three different issues, and I was, I did receive communication back, and I really do appreciate that. So two of the matters, I'm working with the DPW, but one of the issues, I was just curious if you had an update. It had to do with the sidewalks, between the sidewalks and the road there at 8301 East 46th Street, there where the new Lawrence senior apartments are located. There's an area that was never backfilled by the developer, and I'm just wondering if you might have an update on that. I'm also being contacted about that.
That developer hasn't been contacted and treated and backfilled, and I've not heard anything from Bill Anthony in terms of what the developer response file was. It should have been filled quite a while ago. I didn't know it had not been filled. I'm a miss or anybody that they had, and there's no reason why it shouldn't have been filled back then. I don't know. I didn't get enough information back then, I won't let you know.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Any other counselors?
Yes, Madam President. It came to my attention, and I wasn't able to make the meeting where the, we, with CSX Railroad, I guess, 46th Street, the train tracks will be completely closed for any kind of crossing, even though it's blocked off, you know, with barricades and whatnot. But I guess the Board of Public Works voted to make that a permanent thing now. And with that being done, would that mean that we are, that something is going to eventually happen with this intersection? Or are we just closing the train track intersection? Because there is people or businesses back to the south of that, of that train track right there at 46th Street that was able to make passage from still over the railroad tracks on the 46th Street onto that property. And so once this, once this train track is completely closed to, for vehicle traffic, then that's going to be, that's going to hamper them. And I would have thought that, you know, some sort of notification could have been given to the property owner, so she could have made notification to all the people that she rents to. But if the administration could update, if there's anything on the horizon with that Franklin Road, 46th Street area, with any kind of, are we going to do anything with, are we just going to continue to block off 46th Street? Because if, if you go that way, if you go 46th Street and go to the east around 4:30, 5 o'clock, it's just, it's terrible. The traffic is terrible trying to get down 46th Street. Most of us that live in that area just know now to try to avoid it, but there's still a lot of them that don't. So anyway, if at all possible, you know, hopefully, we can get something done with that during the very near future, because it's been about two years since that's been blocked off. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes and regular meetings of October 2nd and October 18th, 2017. Make the motion. Disregard, thanks for the motion anyways. Save it for next meeting.
Dang it.
No, we already did that.
Okay. Signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Counselor Chevlat, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Parker. Discussion.
Madam President, if I may, there's a check, it's actually a credit card expenditure, and it's on the Chase card for $5,456.92. Is that, well, my understanding from Counselor Freeman, got an email from the controller that that was something to do with the Christmas tree and the mayor's conference travel and the travel and lodging, I think. Could the controller fill us in a little on that?
Yes, the payment to Chase is the city's credit card. We have one credit card. On that bill were expenses for the Lawrence Christmas Tree project as part of Lawrence Christmas. Those funds are paid out of the donation fund, so that's where the payment for that expense would come from. There was also airfare for a trip to DC about a month ago. There was the AIM Conference, which was in Evansville in early October. There were expenses for the registration and hotel fees, or hotel expense for the conference. And then there was also hotel expenses for the trip to DC.
What was, excuse me, what was the purpose for the trip to DC, if I might ask?
The mayor, myself, and corporation counsel went to Washington to meet with our representatives so that we can make sure Lawrence is in line to receive federal funding.
And I just happened to look into the city codebook, and I looked under section 1-1-2-13, and it says that it's credit card payments for emergency online purchases. And under paragraph A, it says, "A single credit card from JP Morgan Chase Bank may be issued in the name of the City of Lawrence with the controller designated as responsible official for the account." My understanding of this, this is, this credit card should be just used for emergency purchases only. I don't see how airline tickets, Christmas tree, and lodging would constitute an emergency purchase.
If you can't pay for it in any other method, is it an emergency?
Is there not?
How would you pay for airfare?
I don't know.
I'd take a bag of cash down to the airport and say, "Give me a ticket." The only option's a credit card, so if you can't use anything else, that's an emergency.
Would that be the same for a Christmas tree and the same for a lodging?
If you have no other method to pay for it but a credit card, would it not be an emergency?
All I'm saying, sir, is I'm looking at the city code, and it also says, under line C, or paragraph C, it says, "The credit card should not be used to bypass the accounting system, and payment on the account should not be made on the basis of the monthly statement or a credit card slip without supporting documentation."
And all of that has been followed, and we are not bypassing the accounting system. All these are expensed through our New World system, they're in the monthly budget reports. Heck, they're even on the claims. If we were trying to hide it, it wouldn't be on the claims.
Well, you had said that it pays for, that this credit card paid for lodging at the mayor's conference, was that correct?
At the AIM Conference, correct.
But yet, in the, under date 11/15/2017, invoice 86366352, it says, "Mayor's AIM Conference Lodging, 10/12/17 for $296.70," and it's on the bills.
What page is that on?
Page 1 of 6.
Yes, and that is a reimbursement to the mayor who used his personal card for his hotel.
So if this is a reimbursement, then why is it showing up?
Because there were other folks in attendance at the conference, myself included.
Okay, well, I would just like to see the statements from that credit card, if I may. And I would like to make a motion that we pull just from the payments, and, and maybe even, I think we should also pull the $296.70 as well until we get a chance to review it. And I'd like to make a motion that we pull it, these two, these two line items.
Yeah, right now, Counselor Wells, we have a motion and a second on the floor to pay, so that would have to be withdrawn. There's already a motion and a second.
Well, Madam President, we didn't allow for discussion until it was, until that was already, that motion was already made.
That's, that's how we operate. You can make the motion to withdraw.
I think I would have.
You would have to.
I think Mr. Chev, Counselor Chevlat would have to.
Counselor Chevlat chooses not to, so we have a motion by Counselor Chevlat and a second by Counselor Parker. Is there any further discussion?
I get, I got a preliminary question if I could ask.
Right ahead.
Could I ask our city, our council attorney her opinion on this?
Well, just having heard about this this evening, I, I struggle to give you a complete opinion. But that being said, and I'm sure Mr. Fenwick is far more aware off the top of his head than I am about the state board accounts rules with regard to credit card transactions, which are, they do have limitations for what they can be used for, and obviously, they can't be used for, without supporting documentation or as a means to get by traditional accounting systems. I would always encourage, if there is a question about whether there is adequate supporting documentation, that the council take the time to look at those and take them seriously and make sure everyone is satisfied. But I also can say that procedurally, there is a motion on the floor, and you can't have a second motion on the floor while you have one pending. So absent that motion being withdrawn or the current motion being voted down, and then we revisit the issue taking out the invoices that are of some concern, and then revisiting that vote, procedurally, that's where we stand. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Chevlat, a second by Counselor Parker. All in favor by show of hands, paying of the vouchers.
I'm going to abstain.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Controller Fenwick. Okay, so it's been approved. Thank you, counselor. Next on the agenda, we have reports of committee. There are none. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, resolution number 9, 2017.
Resolution number 9, 2017, introduced by Counselor Jones. A resolution amending the council rules with respect to time allowed for citizen and council member comments.
Okay, I'll be assigning that to code. Next, we have proposal number 23, 2017.
Proposal number 23, 2017, introduced by Counselor Giles. A proposal for an ordinance amending prior bond ordinances authorizing the issuance of certain Waterworks revenue bonds of the city and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith.
That'll be assigned to finance.
Madam President, I have a question just related to this. I noticed that today, I read on the website that we have kind of moved forward with the, with the bond. So I wasn't sure, I hadn't had an opportunity to talk a little further, even though I am the sponsor of this, I wanted to give Mr. Fenwick a little opportunity to kind of talk about a little bit where we're at, and depending on what he says, you know.
So yes, we did, on the website, there's a press release today. We did refund the 2007 and 2009 water bonds in terms of, we priced the deal yesterday. So the savings to the water utility is $2.5 million, so it's a little over, about $230,000 a year. So the proposal number 23, which we spoke about, is related to the refunding bonds. It's not required to be in place prior to the pricing of those. It doesn't also need to be in place before closing of the deal. Ideally, we'd like to have it approved before then, but it's not a requirement.
Okay.
And so this was addressing the surety bond, debt service reserve, but it can be done, you know, now or at a later date.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't holding anything up, you know, by sending it to finance and stuff, you know, so we can, it's an awesome thing for the city. Good work.
Okay, thank you. So proposal number 23, 2017 will be assigned to finance. Next, we have comments of the administration.
I'm going to open up here as Chief Hoffman is passing out the answers to the frequently asked questions, and it's, I think it's a seven or eight-page document that we have put together to try to answer all the questions that you have had about the police station. Again, we want to emphasize the fact that we're getting this to you with the full expectation that you have not seen the actual resolution yet for the police station. We did want to try to answer as many questions as we possibly could for you, and I just want you to know that if any more questions come up, send them to us, and we'll get them answers to you as quickly as we can, so that we get before that December 4th meeting in there. So we've been working on that pretty diligently, and I think we were updating it, Chief, I think, what, at 6:22. We were still updating it today to try to give everything back to you in there. So we're here also to answer questions. I'm going to say one more thing here and then turn it over to Chief if you have any questions. Tree lighting ceremony is the Saturday, the 25th. I'd like to invite all of you to come. We'll have a little parade, and it's kind of a fun evening. We have a parade of all, my department chairs all decorate their various vehicles, and some of it gets pretty humorous, some of it, they put a lot of time with it. So we'll have quite a few people there. It'll start at 5:00, but the parade will start close to dusk. Many of the floats that will be in the parade will be lit this year, so we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to see the full effect. And then we'll light the tree that evening. We'll be entertained with Christmas music, Santa Claus, actually, Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus will be there. Only one Santa Claus is allowed in the parade, and it's the real one, so he'll be there. But I want to invite all of you to, if you have a chance to come on that Saturday after Thanksgiving in there. So I'll turn it over to Chief now, and we'll see if you have any questions he can answer for you.
Thank you.
Unlike last time, I don't really have a presentation or a long list of things to mention. One thing I have noticed is that council members like to get as much information as possible, and then be able to think about what they have seen, and then enter into discussions and questions and answers at a later date. So I'm not expecting you to read all seven or eight of these pages right now, but I will say there are 31 questions in here that have been asked. Some of them are new, some of them are old. You'll notice the very first one is a, "Why does the city need a new police station?" That's been covered, I think, very thoroughly. But there are some other ones that are very specific regarding some of the financing issues and some of the questions regarding tax rates and bond issues and those kinds of things. So what I hope to do is give you all time to read this, think about it, sleep on it, digest it for as much time as you need, and we're hoping that by the December 4th, first of the month council meeting, we'll be bringing to you a resolution. At that time, we'll, we'll be available to answer questions, really, from, from tonight until December 4th. Every member of the administration that has anything to do with this police station stands at your beck and call to answer any questions. And I know that, I think we've, I think we've kind of explained the why, the need, the, you know, just the whole, why is this, why is this even coming to you, and the whole project? But maybe what we have failed to do is really elaborate on the financial part of it, the, you know, how are we going to pay for this? And if that's, if, that's probably on me, perhaps, to, that I didn't explain that very well in our private meetings and then in the meeting last week. But I think if you review this document, you'll see that more than a third of those 31 questions, they go directly towards financing. So I'll be, I stand here tonight, ready to answer any questions you may have, but I also am communicating the fact that I'm totally good with if you don't have any. And when we come back on December 4th, we'll stand up here as a team and answer any questions, everything from why, when, how, location, cost, you know, everything into the future, operational budgets, everything. So again, just wanted to kind of give you more information and hope that, hope that we have your support in this project.
Madam President.
Counselor Wheeler?
Could you please provide this via email so I can disseminate it to the constituents a little bit easier than photocopies?
Would you like to address that?
Yeah, it will have electronic, and I'll have it out tonight, soon as I leave the building.
Thank you, Kathy, as always.
It will be in your mailbox.
I forwarded it to Kathy with a, with a request to distribute after the meeting tonight.
Perfect, thank you.
Before I go home, I'll email it to everybody.
And you'll notice also, there's, there's a link, there's an internet link in here that you can click on. Obviously, you can't do that on paper, so, yeah.
Madam President, I want, first of all, thank you so much for getting back with us with the answers to a lot of these questions. My one concern that I do have is will the actual documents at least be provided to council attorney so that she can read and review those things?
Absolutely.
As we're talking and revise.
There are, I believe, and that's answered in one of the questions. There are three legal documents that set this course, set us on our path, and Ms. Wheeler, you'll be able to review all of them. We'll get them to you ASAP.
That's all, thank you.
Any other counselors?
I'm sorry. You had said in the meeting that you and I had had that the council, getting approval from the council was like Plan A, and that there would be an alternate plan. Can you elaborate on that?
At this time, we're just confident that once you all receive the information that you need, that you want, that you've requested, that the Plan A is going to be satisfactory. So we're just focusing on doing this as a team rather than around you, or, you know, essentially, we want all of you and all of your constituents to be aware of all of these questions and answers, and what, what, what we're getting, what we're paying for it, what the term is, what we hope to achieve, all of those things we're doing, and we're focusing on Plan A. We feel that this is, the only way to go is to have you all, on behalf of your constituents, be with us as, as an entire community. This is a community project, and I'm really just focused on Plan A.
If I may, sir, the, my understanding, you know, and I've got most of this second-hand, I guess, from word, basically the rumor mill, but there's apparently a bond that's getting ready to, getting ready to lapse, and we're going to continue that bond to pay for this police station, is that correct?
It's all in your packet.
If you can't answer that, I'll have to read it.
I just provided it to you.
Okay, I'll just read it.
I could give general rumor mill based type.
I'm not asking for a rumor.
I can address the rumor mill, or I can give you solid, hard facts, which I have done right here for you to take your time to read and.
I'll read it then.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate the facts, and I appreciate your time, Chief Hoffman. I appreciate the facts, and I appreciate your time, Chief Hoffman.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion?
Second.
Your adjourn.